You know what I want to do is find a mobile plumber that will come to the house. Because I think that would be better.
Yeah, I.
One that come in.
All right. Yeah, you're ready? Okay. Good evening, welcome to the City of Groton Mayor and Council Meeting for Monday, May 5th, 2025. Claire Becura, please call her own.
Mayor Hedrick, Deputy Mayor Depot, Counselor Piazza, Counselor Sheffield, and Counselor O'Tally are present.
Okay, thank you. Please stand, place a flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any recognitions, awards, and memorials? We do not have any Department Awards from the police tonight. We're going to move that to a future council meeting. I do have some proclamations.
Reporting in progress.
The first proclamation is from the National Day of Prayer. Says, whereas throughout the history of America, we have poured our prayers out to the God of hope in times of crisis and celebration and prosperity and need, in times of war and peace, and whereas from the first prayer of our Continental Congress in 1774 to the opening of every session of the House of Representatives and Senate, and throughout hearts and homes across America, the prayer, the practice of prayer continues to seek God for our guidance, wisdom, power, protection, and provision that has preserved hope and united us as one nation under God, and whereas the National Day of Prayer is a public law established by the United States Congress in 1952, approved by a joint resolution and amended by Congress and President Reagan with Public Law 100-307 in 1988, affirming that it is essential for us as a nation to pray, and directs the President of the United States to set aside and proclaim the first Thursday of May annually as a National Day of Prayer. And whereas the National Day of Prayer is of great significance for us as a nation as it enables participants to seek wisdom and guidance throughout, through prayer to face our nation's critical issues, and whereas it is a day that transcends differences, bringing together citizens from all backgrounds, and whereas prayer offers communities an opportunity to come together in strength and in hope to face life's sorrows and celebrate life's joys. Now therefore, I Keith Hedrick, Mayor of the City of Groton, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the city, hereby declare Thursday, May 1st, 2025, as National Day of Prayer in the City of Groton, and ask that we may come together and in accordance with our own faith, give thanks. In witness thereof, I have here and to set my hand and affix the official seal of the City of Groton this first day of May 2025. Signed, Keith Hedrick, Mayor, City of Groton. International Firefighters' Day is May 4th. So from the Office of the Mayor, proclamation, International Firefighters' Day, whereas firefighters dedicate their lives to the protection of life and property, sometimes that dedication is in the form of countless hours volunteered over many years, and others, it is many selfless years working in industry. In all cases, it risks the ultimate sacrifice of a firefighter's life. And whereas International Firefighters' Day is a time where the world's community can recognize and honor the sacrifices that firefighters make to ensure that their community and environment are as safe as possible, and whereas International Firefighters' Day is a time in which current and past firefighters can be thanked for their contribution, and whereas a special time to stop and reflect on the sacrifices made by firefighters is held on the first Sunday in May at noon each year when fire sirens sound for 30 seconds, followed by a minute's silence in memory of and respect for all firefighters who have been lost in the line of duty or passed on before us. And whereas International Firefighters' Day is observed each year on May 4th, on this date, you're invited to remember the past firefighters who have died while serving our community or dedicated their lives to protecting the safety of all of us. And now for, and now therefore, I Keith Hedrick, Mayor of the City of Groton, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the city, recognize May 4th, 2025, as International Firefighters' Day, and extend my gratitude to the brave men and women who protect us and are members of the City of Groton Fire Department. In witness thereof, I have here and to set my hand and affix the official seal of the City of Groton this fifth day of May 2025, signed, Keith Hedrick, Mayor, City of Groton. This week is also the 50th Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week, whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government exists throughout the world, is oldest among public servants, and whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas municipal, Professional Municipal Clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas Professional Municipal Clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. And whereas Professional Municipal Clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations, and whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishment of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk. And now therefore, I Keith Hedrick, Mayor of the City of Groton, by virtue of the authority vested in me in the city, by the city, recognize the week of May 4th through May 10th, 2025, as Professional Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend appreciation to our Professional Municipal Clerk, Danny Becura, and to all Professional Municipal Clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. In witness thereof, I have here and to set my hand and affix the official seal of the City of Groton this fifth day of May 2025, signed, Keith Hedrick, Mayor, City of Groton. And then lastly, next week is the Police Week. It's National Police Week, and since there is no place in the committee, the whole agenda to do this, I'm doing it a week early. So this is the proclamation for National Police Week, whereas National Police Week celebrated May 11th through 17, 2025, offers honor, remembrance, and peer support while allowing law enforcement, survivors, and citizens to gather and pay homies to those who gave their lives in the line of duty, and whereas in 1962, President Kennedy proclaimed May 15th as the National Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the calendar week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week. Established by a joint resolution of Congress in 1962, National Police Week pays special recognition to those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others, and whereas National Police Week is a collaborative effort of many organizations dedicated to honoring America's law enforcement community and gives special recognition to those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others. And whereas the City of Groton Police Department is comprised of officers, corporals, sergeants, lieutenant, captain, and chief, administrative and records clerk staff, and dispatchers, and whereas it is important for all citizens to know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices made by law enforcement professionals, and that members of the City of Groton Police Department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception, and the weak against oppression. And whereas there are more than 800,000 law enforcement officers serving communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the City of Groton Police Department, and whereas since the first recorded death in 1786, there are currently more than 24,000 law enforcement officers in the United States that have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty, including one member of the City of Groton Police Department. And whereas the names of the dedicated public service are engraved on the wall of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC, and whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's 37th candlelight vigil on the evening of May 13th, 2025, and whereas a candlelight vigil is part of the National Police Week, which will be observed this year, May 11th through May 17th, and whereas May 15th is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and US flags should be flown in half staff. And now therefore, I Keith Hedrick, Mayor of the City of Groton, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the city, in recognition of National Police Week, do hereby proclaim that the City of Groton will observe May 11th through 17, 2025, as National Police Week, and I publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and communities across the nation. In witness thereof, I have here and to set my hand and affix the official seal of the City of Groton this fifth day of May 2025, signed, Keith Hedrick, Mayor, City of Groton. So those are the proclamations for today. Okay, do we have, there's no one online, and we don't have anyone signed up? Okay, since we don't have anyone sign up for citizen petitions, we will skip citizens. Deputy Mayor Depot?
I have a memorial for the recognition awards and memorials. I just wanted to recognize, we had a lifelong resident, Everest Bruce Stallone, passed away on April 22nd, he was 103. I'm betting that anyone that's lived in the city for a long period of time would recognize him. He was, he was pretty well-known and well-liked figure in the community, and I just want to recognize that passing.
Okay, thank you. Okay, since we do not have any citizen petitions, we're going to skip over receipt of citizens' petitions and responsive citizens' petitions comments. We'll move on to approval of minutes. I'll take a motion to approve the public hearing minutes of April 21st, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay, motion carries unanimously. Take a motion to approve a special committee of the whole meeting minutes for April 21st, 2025.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Any motion carries unanimously. I'll take a motion to approve the mayor and council meeting minutes of April 21st, 2025.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, are there any corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. And lastly, I'll take a motion to accept the committee of the whole meeting minutes for April 28th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Any motion carries unanimously. Communications and report, communications and reports. Counselor Piazza?
Nothing to report.
Okay, Counselor Sheffield?
Nothing to report.
Counselor O'Tally?
Nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor Depot?
Thank you, Mayor. On April 25th, I volunteered at the Mobile Food Pantry. Once again, they do that every month. I know they've also started doing quarterly ones at the senior center that you can go pick up, so keep an eye on the United Way of Southeastern Connecticut's Facebook page to me is the easiest way to get those updates, but if you need assistance with food, they have, have at least one a week that you can attend in the area, and also you can connect with Groton Human Services if you need in between when those mobile food pantries are. On the 28th, I attended the Workers Memorial at 6:00 in the morning. They had, the speakers had some really important information to share about safety at work and talked about the importance of OSHA and the reduction in workplace accidents that have occurred since that legislation has been, was put in place, and I just want to remind everyone, you know, that safety at work, just the little things that workplaces implement do make a big difference, and every year at the Workers Memorial, they cite all of those statistics, and it's, it's, it's kind of crazy to think about without any regulation how many people were getting injured and killed at workplaces just because there weren't any safety things implemented, so, you know, and he, the, one of the guys that spoke made a quote, "If you look at something and think, 'I have to be careful when I do that,' then you maybe need to find a way to make it safer before you do it." So just want to remind everyone to stay safe at work. And on May 1st, I attended the National Day of Prayer. That's always a great event that we host in the auditorium and surrounding churches, and it gets pretty good attendance, and it brings that, that community together, similar to the other events that we do, like the flag raisings for, you know, Black History Month or whatever, like it's kind of, it's, it's interesting how similar it is to bring that group of the community together, and I just want to encourage people because any of those events that we host, like the flag raisings and stuff, you meet people who are in a group that you care about or are interested in, and you can make a lot of connections that way. So if you're looking for community, those types of events that we host here can be a good, good stepping stone for that. So I want to remind people of all of those that we, that we do, and that's it.
Okay, thank you. Claire Becura, do you have anything?
I just, in, for Municipal Clerks Week, I would also like to give a thanks to Marisol Melendez in the town, as she completes a lot of services for the city residents also.
Yes, she does. Okay, thank you. Moving on to committee referrals, are there any committee referrals? Okay, we'll move into new business. Counselor Piazza?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution R-25-05-33, therefore be resolved that mayor and council approve the appointment of Denise Diaz Sanchez, 305 Michelle Lane, Groton, Connecticut, as a regular member, Youth Advisory Committee, term to expire May 5th, 2027, ISO move. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, this is discussed at the committee of the whole. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Deputy Mayor Depot?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution R-25-5-34, therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council approve the transfer of $13,723.42 to the tax collector's suspense tax book, ISO move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, this is discussed during the committee of the whole. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 We, motion carries unanimously. Counselor Sheffield?
Resolution R-25-05-35, therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council authorize Groton Utilities Management to issue a purchase order to Altech Industries, 210 Inverness Center Drive, PO Box 11407, Birmingham, Alabama, 35246, a member of Sourcewell, a cooperative purchasing program through the state of Connecticut, for an amount not to exceed $300,000 and no cents, including a contingency, to purchase Bucket Truck Altech Model AN55E-OC articulating over center aerial to be paid from fiscal year 25 electric capital budget, ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. This is discussed during the committee of the whole. Is there any additional discussion? Counselor Sheffield?
I guess the contingency, what was the, was there a?
It includes a contingency, I don't remember, that was in the backup material from last time.
Okay. I was here, that needed to be specified or not, so.
Deputy Mayor Depot?
The contingency is in the resolution, if you scroll up a little bit.
You're right.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Counselor O'Tally?
Resolution 25-05-36, therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council authorize Groton Utilities Management to issue a purchase order to HO Penn 122 Maxon Road, Poughkeepsie, New York, a member of Sourcewell, a cooperative purchasing program through the state of Connecticut, for an amount not to exceed $196,232.51, including a 3% contingency to purchase a Caterpillar 309 CR hydraulic excavator with attachments to be paid from electric non-located capital, ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, this is discussed during the committee of the whole. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Counselor Piazza?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution R-25-05-37, therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council award Bill Memorial Library located at 240 Monument Street, Groton, Connecticut, 06340, the Economic Development Minor Facade Improvement Grant in the amount of $2,500, ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, this is discussed during the committee of the whole. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Deputy Mayor Depot?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution R-25-5-38, therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council accept a donation of $2,000 and no cents from General Dynamics Electric Boat Corporation, Community Engagement, in support of the City of Groton 2025 Farmers Market SNAP EBT Program, ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, this is discussed at the committee of the whole. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Counselor Sheffield?
Resolution R-25-05-39, therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council accept the 2025 Agricultural Enhancement Grant Award in the amount of $15,600 and no cents to be utilized over the next two years to promote growing the City of Groton Farmers Market and beyond, ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, this is discussed during the committee of the whole. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn. Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are, we are adjourned. Thank you all, thank you council for coming out.
Thank you.
Thank you, Danny.
Recording stopped. Okay, so that, that's got to be what IT was talking about.